Welcome back guys, to Trails of Cold Steel III, where last episode Rheen with the help of Ash and Muse stepped up to face Aeon Type Alpha II, with Alomaz Zemiria Tachi breaking during the battle, but then forming a blade of friendship to defeat Oriboros's latest experiment, with the Stalwart retreating after Alienode revealed another divine knight destroying the Aeon. With the political conference then continuing with Markis Ballad losing out on his coveted position of power to Duchess Mildine Yusuf de Caïn, chapter 3 reaches end with Angelica digging up Crow's Grave, only to reveal another betrayal, as events keep unfolding. Well, it doesn't look like we're returning to the affairs of Class VII just yet, or maybe we are considering what was said, you never know? Are we here, here to get an award or not? That's what I'm wondering.
Damn it! How many times have they slipped away like that now? There's no end to it!
We need help from the Intelligence Division, or the RMP.
Man, be nice if all we had to deal with are those halfwits. But we can't afford to let our guard down. Spread out and lay low until the appointed time. Be sure you've got your Ramdis ready to use.
Roger.
Recomencing mission.
Red flowers?
Someone's lucky they didn't query too much into this. Oh, not you again!
I don't think so. Ah, there's no end to them.
The eyes which served as the vessel for the bringer of miracles. But when the flame consumed the mirage, the fairy tale became that of the Empire. So as a professional, how do you intend to intervene?
Oh, was I that obvious? To be perfectly honest, I'm having a bit of trouble finding a lead. I was hoping we could work together as friends and colleagues and have ourselves a little information exchange. I could even help you bury the hatchet with the elder of your clan, perhaps?
That's right. You have an agreement with her, don't you? Well, I'll consider your offer. However, I ask that you play nice from now on, Mr. Former History Instructor. Or should I say, Second Dominion, Thomas Lysander the Partitioner.
Everyone's moving. Hey, my most interesting thing about the game, are dominions. Gotta love me any bit of scraps of information we can get of them. Thing I am most curious about anyway. Are we getting our award? So rich, they keep their own stock of Fireflies. Now that's opulence.
I would not have expected that Oliver would be missing the party like this.
It is unfortunate, yet understandable, given the current situation. With the Crimson Wings safeguarding Heimdall's skies, I'm sure the citizens will feel at ease.
Yes, but I can't help but feel bad for him. I wonder if he's been upset over Cedric's actions of late?
Hmm, Oliver isn't the type to let that get to him. You should know this as well as I.
No, you're right. He was only a young boy when he lost his mother, and was adopted into the royal family. I would have understood if he hadn't accepted me, given his early life. But he gladly welcomed me as his stepmother, and was truly happy when Alfin and Cedric were born.
Yes, that is the virtue he possesses. It's easy to believe he has friends not simply across Erebonia, but the entire continent.
Yes, however, recently, even though Cedric once looked up to his older brother, he...
Pardon me, Your Highness. Chancellor Osborn would like an audience.
Very well, send him in.
My apologies for interrupting, my liege. You as well, Lady Priscilla.
No. It's quite alright. I shall excuse myself now.
She seems to have some worries about the prince.
It is to be expected. So long as she sees things differently from you.
Understood.
In any event, it seems things are beginning to line up with what was written in the records.
Yes, though we set the timing for the civil war ourselves. By this point however, the ending is all but decided. But are you certain this is alright? Leaving everything in my hands?
As I told you 14 years ago, if there truly is no other way to avoid this end, then I shall leave it all to you. It may place a great burden on my sons, but could not the same be said of you?
Yes, my liege.
And so begins chapter 4, Radiant Heimdall. Our scene is set, are we to return? To the branch campus? Oh yes! That must be branch campus times, 2 weeks more pass! 4th of July. With July summer was in full swing in leaves. However, with Force moving back toward being a traditional military academy, no summer uniforms were given out, aw come on! Students of both the main and branch camps were only allowed to remove the inner lining from their normal uniforms.
If you're military, you have to learn to sweat and suffer!
As students across both campuses were wobbling under the sun's harsh rays, a certain event was about to take place that would bring them all together. Wait. Sports day? 4th period Erebonian history. I'm sure now we've covered an overview of the time period from the Great Collapse of the Modern Era. But starting this week, we'll be taking a more in-depth look at certain key individuals. We'll start with Drakos Zizeana, father of the Imperial Renaissance. 250 years ago, he brought the War of the Lions to a close, ushering us into the Modern Era. Though he was born as the 4th Prince of Emperor Valius V, he was born out of wedlock and ended up abdicating his status and wandering the Empire. He found himself at the edge of the Empire, the North Highlands. There, he was welcomed by the nomadic tribes, spent a few years with them. Meanwhile, the Empire's main end had been plunged to a bloody civil war. Originally, he had no interest in the throne, but once he saw the toll the war was taking on his country, he decided to put an end to it. He started with only 17 followers, 16 nord warriors who decided to join him, and his confidant, the Knight Roland. Half a year later though, Prince Drakos would have a fateful encounter in the southeast of the Empire, Le Granne. A daughter of a count and leader of the Ismerida, Lian Sandlo, the hero otherwise known as the Lance Maiden.
I, I have a question. Was that person you and the other instructors fought, the real Saint Lian?
Yeah, I've been wondering the same thing. Saint Lian is a legendary knight. There's no way it was actually her, but I heard the fight was intense. While instructor?
Without a doubt. She was tremendously strong, and that aura of hers certainly seemed real. But, it's possible one of Oriboros's members is just posing as her. Let's put that aside for now though.
What a stingy!
By the way, 254 years ago, on July 4th, the War of the Lions came to an end. Now keep in mind the test will cover the events from just before to just after the War of the Lions. So make sure to review that time period thoroughly. I hate to admit it, but he really is good at teaching. I'd be fair, he himself was a student just last year. I heard his grades are pretty high too. Need his grading glasses too! But that's not bringing students together from both campuses! Sports day would probably do that, into sports thing. I thought you meant literally, not kind of figuratively emotionally. Anyway, our 4 days of midterms will begin tomorrow. Bye bye asses! General Studies, Military Science, Arts Information Processing, Combat Technique, there'll be a lot to cover, so good luck! You railed those all off like it'd be easy. No way, oh that's gonna be easy. I suppose we'll still have to trust in everything we've learned thus far. By the by, a little birdie told me the contents of our exams and the schedule match that of the main campus. I wonder, will our grades be posted alongside theirs? That's right, both individual scores and class averages will be posted at both campuses. Oh, so there's a competition going on. So it should be worth your time to study, wouldn't you agree? It's so blatant. You're gonna make us compete? And our little crown prince is gonna be had in first place on a silver platter, yeah? That's... I can totally see that happening. Nope, that won't happen. In the past, Force has split up into nobles and commoners, but grading has always been done fairly. The instructors I know at the main campus wouldn't let grades be tampered with like that. So at the very least, the exams will be a level playing field. Did you say so? Also be a little reward waiting for you guys once the exams are over. You'll have a free day this weekend to look forward to, so give the exams your all! I'll be giving the exams for Erebonian History and Combat Technique, so please ask me anything you're confused about before tomorrow. Now who says the teacher has to take the test? Unfortunately, that logic would apply if it wasn't a game. All preparations for the exams have been completed. Grades will be posted alongside the main campuses, but I didn't expect there to be problems. Our curriculum should be in sync, thanks to the Ornet. It's great that we were able to work with the main campus instructors to come up with exam questions. All that's left is for the students themselves to show us what they've got. The Aegsords have been confirmed retreating from the Empire since last most field exercises. And according to the Intelligence Agency, which appear the Society is withdrawn as well. I see. Well if that's true, it's great news, but... Maybe we could stop being fully clenched all the time now? My butt cheeks! We cannot let our guards down completely, but for the time being, we can at least allow them to just be students. Take care not to disclose any information regarding exam questions, but feel free to clarify any questions the students have. Be a simple guiding hand in their studies. Looks like big bad Mr. Michael has already toned it down. He's always been very serious and responsible. It seems like he's been thinking with the students in mind recently. It's to our best to be as much help to the students as we can today! Alright, we've still got some time before the school closes today. Well then, let's go up, gang! Oh my god... The exams will be held over the next 4 days, and then this Saturday is a free day. Location for our next field exercise will be announced too, so it's gonna be a busy few days. What, do we only tell them one day in advance? Oh, you got exams by the way. Looks like everyone's working to give it a brush up on their weak subjects. I guess I made my rounds and talked to any students who thought they're having a tough time. That's, that's aside... Oriboros and the Black Workshop. I wonder if the principal and the professor know anything about them? Now here's a free day before the exam, oh my god! Talk specific characters today to trigger study events, I should have brought like a notebook and paper up here. The main story will progress after you've seen all the key events and used up all your studying points. Studying points. How many studying points do I have? 3. Thank you messages from tons of people, it tasted divine! Eastern tea you sent me was just delicious Rheen. I did have a difficult time bringing out its true essence of mine. Eastern and western teas are prepared very differently, I've come to learn. I think you would be much better at it. I'd love it if you could teach me your ways. Oh yeah, I didn't think about that when I gave it to her. I loved the idea of teaching her how to prepare it though. Elise, thanks to you! I tried that pure white soap you sent me and the results were wonderful! Usually makes me feel as moisturized when I bathe in the hot springs at home. I bet you see for yourself if I could! Perhaps I'll have enough to set aside for our next hot springs visit? Eh, not so sure about that. We're old enough that we shouldn't really be bathing together anymore. It's nice that students do make a use of the soap at least.
Touch my skin Rheen.
Macchi, yes, it sure works great! How's your sausage coffee grinder, yeah? I use the antique coffee grinder you sent me right away, antique? In a word, it's incredible! There's this age profound flavour I've got a bit, that's like I've been sent back in time, what sausage? Cup them all in a bit and I'm good to work the rest of the day! Come visit the Ost District when I'm home and I'll bring you a cup! Oh, sausage coffee? Huh, I knew a coffee connoisseur like him would appreciate it. I'm already looking forward to that cup. And yes, I know we only traded the sausages, but what's more fun? From Sharon, what a bold boy you are! Setting a word perfume master Rheen? Mai, are you ever bold? And I happen to love the smell of roses, I'll be certain to wear this next time I see you. I will of course be keeping this a secret from Lady Lisa, as should you. Maybe I pushed it, if it's a gift we have to keep secret. Wish Kira likes it, that's all that matters. How to put this without sounding silly? Thank you for such a nice present. Such a beautiful and elegant design that I didn't even realise it was a pinky ring at first. I thought it was an engagement ring, which... Would have been fine by me, really. Just kidding, duh! Yeah, just kidding, honestly.
Please, put it on my finger!
Thanks then Rheen, I'll be sure to show it off on a special occasion! Damn, she really threw me for a second. Ah whatever, I'm just glad she likes it.
Please! Bring it please, get it on there!
That's all our thank yous for now. That's all the good subs for 8 months, thank you very much! I've been watching Press X simulate for the past 3 minutes or so, while I play this game, yeah! That's the thing! That's what we've been doing, uh, what are we doing anywhere actually? I just started running around, so... Seems the students are out there, we can't go to thingy, we've got... I think it's Ar- is it Ar- oh, I don't know. There's sub-events everywhere. So if we are doing anything based on the way we did an exam last time, and we actually have to answer this, maybe based as our students doing it? What did they do? We had to talk to people? And supposedly I didn't get the best rank, or the best things because I missed something? So we've gotta look around, for anything we can find, shinies on the floor, anything within the campus. That's what we gotta do. That's the goal. It's answer tomorrow, I'm so anxious! I'm sure instructor Beatrice came up with a comprehensive set of questions. Um Rheen, do me a favour and make sure to tell all the students to really study, okay? I will, I will. Lynch, you really need to relax, you won't make it through the week at this rate. You're right, I'm sorry. It's our students' first exam, so I wanted to make sure I did everything I could for them. Rheen, let's work together and see them through this.
Let me know what you need.
I need, I should probably buy some of these. They're actually pretty good after all, especially because you can buy the second version. Haven't we got like a billion, uh... Oh my god! Yes! Yes, 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 yes!
Come again anytime!
I do have a billion cash! I'm literally 100k of Sepif Mira just waiting for me. As all the students are studying hard, the scores will be ranked individually as well as by class. I wouldn't mind seeing our students do better than those of the main campus. Yeah, that'd be nice. Wait, if our class only has 5 students, doesn't that mean that our average is gonna be really good if they do really well? Technically, 1 student can drag down the average a ton. There's something here. Oh, it's the book there, it's like, see the mark on the mini map? Creating clean water during a disaster, oh god! Prepare container, pack bottom with cloth, pack charcoal, sand, and pebbles in that order. Pour water from above and wait, yeah that makes sense! Okay, so I've gotta remember that. So in the order of bottom as a cloth, then charcoal, sand, and pebbles. Can I remember this without writing it down somewhere? This is obviously a thing! Do I have to remember it, or do I just get the information zooted in my brain? Oh, I might just write in the Twitch chat here. Cloth, charcoal, sand, pebbles. I've wrote in the chat! It's in there, look, I'll put it in the chat right now, bang! Oh no, I pressed an emote, there you go, see? The chat! This is where it's all just gonna autocomplete. This is like something they teach to actual soldiers on the frontlines. I'll need to make sure everyone memorizes this, as Tradicious gives 10 subs. Thank you very much. Right, where am I going? There's instructor Michael, I guess I'll talk to you to start things off. Maybe I shouldn't while the subs are ringing in, yeah? Bad timing always. There we are! Ah, Principal La Guin, you wear glasses? That's a little surprising, when is a good time, you know? Well actually, for some reason, my vision is unusually keen. I can see everything in excruciating detail from up close to a great distance away. I wear these glasses, to make my eyes normal! Sometimes I find myself getting annoyed by specks of dust flowing in the air. So to combat this issue, I commission these glasses to press my vision, oh my god, she has done that! That's what, that's somehow not surprising at all. All that's left to do for the exams tomorrow is to lead them to the students. Is there something you'd like to ask me, about Oriboros perhaps? Yes, you knew. Uh, what are your thoughts about the report that the Yagis and Oriboros have pulled out of Erebonia? I certainly recommend taking it with a grain of salt. The Aon's, the Black Workshop, there are far too many unseen forces to work here. Yeah, I agree. Regarding the maiden, we've reached an answer source, for better or worse. Ah. She definitely called upon her full power when fighting the 2 of us. What if there was something more to her? Something beyond the power of a human? If she's out of the picture for good, then that's fine. Otherwise, we need to be ready for it, and by "we", I mean all of you. Understood, I'll definitely keep that in mind. To obtain Aurelia's sun's cape and... Aurelia's glasses? What for Aurelia? Who are we putting that on? I'm very confused. What? What? So bizarre. Why is that even in the menu? Already without her trademark cape. I'm so confused by that, whatever! Why, why am I even getting that? An alpine woman from the main campus seems quite talented. We worked together to create the art portion of the midterms. Ah, instructor Mary, I remember thinking the same thing when I was a student in her classes. I remember she had some issues with her family, what now that turned out? You mean the talks of an arranged marriage? She mentioned it, but it seems she has feelings for one of her coworkers now. She seemed so earnest, I couldn't help but give her advice on the matter. Must be instructor Makarov. Thinking about, there did seem to be something between those 2. I don't want to imagine what advice the principal gave though. You see, what you do, if you want your man, you get your big sword and you wonk him over the head with it, knock him unconscious, drag him into your cave. I eagerly wait seeing our legends go for the test tomorrow. Try to help them out while you still can, can't fall behind the main campus. Yeah, that's the plan. That is the Aurelia way. Alright, so we've got straight up bonding. So we can bond with the students, but there's also X, like lots of star points elsewhere as well. Should I be like reading like something like this, go, "Where's the Erebonian histories?" I mean, I should be able to remember this, right? Ha 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 ha, I made it funny! That'll definitely happen. Why is all this Empire history stuff so tricky for me? Did you get any of this Leah, I can help you with the crossbow stuff. I'm also, when it comes to stuff about the ocean, but anything else, I'm a lost case. I gather it's important to know history so you can learn from it, but do we really gotta memorize all these names and dates? I feel like my head's about to explode! Seems like they're crowing for the history exams, they're pretty focused. Maybe we can help them out a bit? I'm trying to remember what happened in Trails of Cold Steel 1. Didn't bonding give you... Like... It was like, everyone was studying, you could join them and you could learn something about one subject. And if I remember correctly, I avoided the stuff that I could probably get, like what was it, military tactics on my own? And then I went for the hard stuff, I think history is the hard stuff. Personally. Oh... Sure, we'll study with you, just save scum. No, hey, you know, you know what, sounds like you two might be having some trouble. Instr- instructor Rheen, I actually should have seen what the other classmates have problems with first, whoops. Well, you're kind of at the root of all our problems right now. I guess that's one way to put it. Ah, it's my way of apologising, how about I help you study? For, for real? Oh man, that'd be great! This part we covered in class just recently. The War of the Lions began in 947. Can you name the 3 events that directly led to it? Um, let's see. The War of the Lions was the battle over Secession. So the first reason was the death of Emperor Valius V. Yeah, that's exactly right. And next is the assassination of Prince Manfred, right? He was supposed to be emperor, but isn't it just those 2 things? Well to be fair, the third reason's a little tricky. But it's also the most direct cause of the war. All the remaining princes trying to claim the throne at once. Yeah, that's right! Ah, I get it. The first one to try to seize the throne was the 4th Prince, Orphus. And it was 2 years after the war began that Prince Drakos raised an army to put an end to it. Um, you just play in steps like that, it's easy to understand. Yeah, there's a lot to remember, but I feel like it's better organised in my head now. Glad to help! No matter how the question is actually written, as long as you understand the sequence of events, you should be able to answer. I hate to admit it, but he's kind of reliable. Why don't you just appreciate him from what he is? I hope I was able to help you guys, even a little. And while I'm here, let me go over the different battlefield with you. After that, Rheen continued to explain various points of the War of the Lions in a simple and accessible way. See, that makes sense anyway, because that was obviously what happened. Oh, you actually get bonding points as well, so we're a little bit further on that one. I'll add something into the chat there. A signifier, a memory word. And I think will probably be the answer to a question judging on what we've just experienced. Alright, where do I go next? Guess we'll speak to everyone here, won't we? I don't know who's going on in any rooms, gotta check every room's floor now, just in case. Or any open books, but I'm guessing they've got quest markers for absolutely everything. You helping these 2 study toa? Yep, sure am. These 2 were both a little worried about questions on politics. Want to mention all the recent changes in the political landscape? Dissolution of the House of Representatives and the House of Peers.
of Representatives and the House of Peers, establishment of the Imperial Diet, the Eight Metropolis Plan. Ah, it all sounds like some foreign language.
Hmm, I feel your pain. If you have the time, would you mind helping us out, Rine? There's only so much I can cover on my own.
Yeah, sure thing.
Then help Toa get the students' advice on political ethics. We got AP just for doing that? Okay, it's fine by me. I guess this is not a question? Ah, I want to finish my test and drink some tea, and of course, eat some confectionaries. Um, Rine, did you see this week's Imperial Chronicle? No, not yet. Something interesting in there. Yeah, they read about the main campus's field exercises. I see. I'll have to take a look. More than anything, we should be focusing on exams. It starts tomorrow after all. Rine, make sure you answer any questions your students might have. I'm gonna teach you what I'd be if I didn't. See, this is the thing as well. I'm thinking like, I'm gonna forget stuff just by talking to people with the volume of text that I'm gonna go through, so it's gonna be terrible. So the first one, I'm not gonna look at the chat, I'm gonna try memory. First one was cloth, charcoal, sand, pebbles. Yes. And the other one is about all the princes gone at once, and the first one to try that was the fourth prince, Orphus. Okay. Which is really what I think is the thing. But we'll find out. See if I can remember it. See, I nearly forgot the first thing already. Planted seedlings that you gave me during the field exercises. I was able to harvest them, so let me share with you. Ooh, thirty flaky potatoes. I assume tomorrow thirty. Four melon ten. Ah, these look good. Thank you, this is really helpful. Hmm, you're welcome. And to be honest, like, I just remembered something that we learned like four minutes ago. Ask me when I've read the paper and all that. Things to teach the branch camps, some real high-level stuff. I'll just need to do my best. Right now, we should be looking at exams. Don't forget to answer any questions, choose my app for you. Yep, we're trying. We're going around and we'll talk to everyone multiple times. Alright, what's going on, kids? Ah, Instructor Rine. You're all studying for the test together? Yes, we're going over things, subject by subject, and teaching each other the ones we know best. My speciality is the medical field. Ah, leave survival skills to me. And finally, I'm in charge of physics. Yeah, it sounds like you've got things covered. Well, if that was everything on the exams, then yes, but I'm having some trouble with history. Oh, I guess that's where I come in. Here, let me take a look. No, thank you. Guess it never hurts to ask. Thanks for your help. Rine gave the students some advice on history and just gets two AP. The easiest AP, we got, no problem. So, well, don't try to like, I see like, how to make a water filter, Ollie, but you're trying to like, keep crash testing me now. Sheesh, using the old knock and really burns up calves. I know, why don't I treat everyone to some bee larva rice later tonight? You see, is the rice just the bee larva? It's just a plate of bee larva and you're pretending it's just rice? Can you tell the difference? Probably yes. What, squiggling or not? It's really interesting how everyone has their own specialties. Even their weapons show off how unique they really are. Ah, I can't seem to concentrate today. Club's off for the day, but maybe I'll head up to the art room later. Gonna bang on some drums, are you? Which actually reminds me of some horrible thing. Remember when I called him the Canadian triumvirate rush? Unfortunately, the one I called him just passed away this week, so that's very saddening. The best drummer in the world. Tita, what's going on? You two studying all technology? Um, for now, yes. I'm gonna teach Tita about military science, and she's teaching me about ordments. I see. Well, it doesn't sound like there's much I can help with here. Actually, regarding the usage of orbital AEDs, if you don't mind, could we get a brief overview? I have some questions about its use outside of just basic operation. Yeah, I was curious about that too. Or that I can help with. Give it to me. Nay, thank you. My thanks. Trying to make me believe that Tita isn't some kind of straight A's on this kind of thing. Rine gave advice on using technology in combat situations. Nah, she's never been in a combat situation, that young girl. Thanks so much, Instructor Rine. You helped a lot. It's really fun getting to study with someone else. Tita's explanation is very easy to understand, unlike Professor Schmidt. Yeah, Professor Schmidt's the type to throw you in the middle of something. Yeah. On the presser aside, Tita's explanation helps greatly. She is the winner there. Everyone go to Tita for your needs. Alright, what are you guys doing then? I'd like to review political ethics. Indeed, unlike other subjects, this one incorporates current events, so we thought we could study by reviewing said events. Unfortunately, all these new terms are rather confusing. I've just spent the whole time asking current questions. So I've keeping you from your own study. Not at all. Explaining these concepts to you is an excellent method of review for me, so please don't worry yourself. You really are a great guy! Guess I seem to be doing fine, but I might still be able to help out here. Should I help these two study? Well, we'll leave it for now. Because we'll find out what the other subjects available to us are. Oh, actually, if I speak to Wayne, no matter what, I get that. And if that one incorporates current events, then I might have a better chance of getting that correct on my own. He wishes. Come away, guys. It's cloth. Charcoal, sand, pebbles, god damn it! It's going terribly! Valerie, what are you doing here? Is there a problem? No, I was just wondering why you weren't studying for the exam. Everyone else has gone together and started studying their weakest subjects. Must I do the same as everyone else? Besides, exams are for measuring your average knowledge. If you cram the day before, it's not a proper measurement. Fair dues. Well, I suppose so, but I thought the valley had opened up a little since when she first got here. But I guess she's still just aloof as ever, knowing things have gone on. Oh yeah, you joined the modern music club, right? How's that been going? Well, that reaction says it all. You having some trouble with the club? I say I am. What does it matter to you? I'd appreciate if you quit prying into my personal matters. I've got nothing to talk with you about. Uh, is that so? As a teacher, I can't let whatever problem she's having continue. I'll talk to the other members of the club first, Pablo and Gustav. Off we go for a rock and a hard place. Now I've gotta do a quest! While also being worried about everything. Don't worry, we'll wash this information away. Hey, Gustav, can we talk? Instructor Rine, what is it? Wanted to ask you about Valerie. Did something happen in the modern music club? Well, it seems like Pablo and Valerie got into a fight over something. Oh, it's just not you then. The drummers, easy, amiable. Valerie hasn't shown up to practice since then. Somehow, I knew this would happen eventually. Ah, why's that? Well, Valerie's the kind of person who shies away from the spotlight. Not because of her personality, but more because of her upbringing. Oh, Valerie's always seemed to carry herself like a noble. Sometimes, she almost reminds me of Musei and Tadiala. Yeah, I got that same impression from her. Nobles are extremely rare in North Ambria these days. I wonder if she grew up being resented by those around her? It's possible. This is all just speculation. Good point. I need to ask her about it directly. Hey, Gustav, that was a big help. Wanted to mention it. I didn't actually do much. Okay, now I see what's going on. I should go talk with Pablo next. A little bit of a tiff between the two of them. Where does that door actually go? Where's this door actually go? Wow, I don't think I've actually exited through that door ever, hello. Sounds really weird to say, but I really don't think I've ever done that. Alright, lots of people, Musei's here. Yes, Gina. Mid-term exams coming up. Everyone looks so serious. They've given out coffee and candy in the cafeteria, but even I'm starting to get nervous. Don't need to worry. By the way, you seem tired. Is everything okay? Um, don't worry, I'm fine. After all, I need to support everyone. Okay, but don't overdo it, alright? My tavern has been really busy lately too. Don't worry though, I'm alright. I can handle myself just fine. I need to support the students as much as I can. Seems like you need a day off. Ordis bombarded, Yuno taken by force. What has arrived? Let's forget everything by reading the paper yet again. And we've also got, uh, Black Records number five, right? Was it? Yes, it was. So we've got a bit to read, really. Let's read the paper first and forget everything. Special feature: Ordis bombarded, Yuno taken by force. At dawn on June 19th, the port city of Ordis in Lemaya Province was assaulted by an unimaginable thunder. At the same time, a giant pillar of water rose up in the bay, and 10 minutes later, there was a second roar that sunk the freighters anchored in the bay instantly, sending the enormous port city into an immediate panic. The bombardment continued afterwards, and while no rounds fell in the city, harbour buildings and ships were heavily damaged. Valera's lighthouse, the symbol of Ordis, was completely destroyed. Where did the bombardment come from? The source of the thunder is thought to be the very new Dragnov-class railway cannons that were recently unveiled. The four weapons that were reconstructed in RF's Western factory for the Imperial Army were stolen and attacked from the valley region more than five hundred cell away from Ordis. According to the Imperial Army, the new cannons maximum range is five hundred cell, which is unexpected proof it was those weapons that were used. Naval fortress briefly occupied. At nine o'clock on the same day as the shells rained down, the Juno naval fortress near the port city was attacked suddenly and was briefly occupied. The Unified Region's army that was in charge of the fortress pushed through in a break from the railway gunfire from the valley. They said that the fortress was occupied by a Jaeger corps and an autonomous weapon group... we- autonomous weapon group of unknown affiliations, the same robotic group. They are assumed to be the same group that stole the railway cannons. There was an armored group with a second corps as well, so reports are conflicted. Handling the incident and assigning responsibility. The port city and valley areas were surrounded by confusion, but the four railway cannons were recovered by the Union Region's army and those helping them by noon of the same day. Other companions recaptured the naval fortress, bringing the incident to a close. However, powers other than the captured Jaeger corps fled the area and their location is still unknown. The Jaeger corps were given over to the Imperial Army's Intelligence Division and have already had their identities discovered, but a well-informed source tells us, they may not be revealed by order of the government. In any case, it appears to be clear the Marcus Ballard of the Lemaya Province was involved in both the theft of the railway cannons and the understaffing of the naval fortress, making a rare statement impeachment likely to be handed down by the Imperial Provincial Council. Hey! They lay... they didn't... what? So they just what? I guess that's the government spin, rather than the noble spin. I mean, the second part's true. Mis- mishandling of armed forces, but still. Incident: Strange occurrences near Haliask. Also on June 19th, near Haliask in the North Ambrian Province, an underground autonomous weapon factory was discovered, then seized and destroyed within the day. It was assumed to be a remnant of an international criminal organization from the Northern Wall last year, and is not thought to be directly related to the incident in Lemay. Bravo to both campuses of Forrester Military Campus. The incident was handled by Forrester Military Academy students, who were trained in Haliask, as the head cadet Crown Prince Cedric made the decision, and finally, the factory was attacked by the Crimson Wings, totally destroying it and allaying any doubts. Really? Is that what's happened? You're kidding me. Well, there's a problem! Nuke it from orbit! I mean, it works, and the loss of life from students is like, students aren't actually doing anything. They just went, "Right, shoot it." What? Local residents were temporarily evacuated, but his highness's direction and care for the wounded were perfect. No average student has one, classmate. Incidentally, students of the academy's branch campus contribute to the handling of the incident in Lemay, giving additional sheen of pride to the Horned Lion crest. Go jam! Preparations for the summer festival begin. One month later than other areas of the Empire, the time for Heimdall's Timber Festival is nearby. Or nearing. The event will be held July 17th through the 19th this year, which is slightly short. The school will be full of celebrations and events like the Summer Festival concert, summer races, and a special performance of the opera. I think we know what's going to be taking place then. Events: Stars and the Zemurian Civilization Exhibit. Stars. Beginning on July 7th in the Laika District of Heimdall, the Stars and Zemurian Civilization Exhibit will open at the museum. The event will last the entire month, and many are expected to visit during the summer festival. The permanent exhibitions in the entrance hall are also said to be enjoyable. The curator reminds us to let your mind go back to the romance of ancient times. Do now. Alright, guys. Cloth, charcoal, sand, pebbles. Yes, I'm fine. I'll talk to Pablo in a second. We'll get our AP first. Yeah, so really have a force to spend our cruising shot again. Yep, pretty much. Hey, Rine! A joyride. Oh, hello, Randy. Are you teaching military studies? Yeah, well, Sydney was about to head out. Jeez, you still got potential. Kids shouldn't give up so easily. I was planning on studying some more tonight. I just figured I should relax a bit first. He's lying. You better just give in. He's offering to lend you a hand. Why don't you say aye and be done with it? Fine. Randy, would it be all right if I helped too? We may need to get a little rough with Sydney. Sounds great. It's a tech team. Why do these things always? And that's why they call it double team. With Rine. Rine and Randy gave the students advice on military studies. AP increased by two. You look bored. Uh, why does your tests have to exist? I know, right? I get ya. I'm on the wavelength. I get that the main campus is making us do this, but man, these practice questions are crazy. Didn't they take a little easier on you back when you were a student? Well, not really. They draw the same stuff into IAS back then too. I said, I took a look at the questions you wrote. They're pretty well thought out. Oh, the instructions of the main campus were impressed too. Well, it's all just stuff I took from personal experience, you know? Nay, and it's that yourself. I saw those combat studies questions of yours. Pretty good if I do say so myself. Thank you. Maybe I have my own instructor to thank. Ah, the Purple Lightning lady, right? She's pretty impressive too. Sometimes I wish I were more like her, able to come anything and everything that comes away. Randy? Anyhow, I can't wait to have these tests over and done with, so I can go get my drink on. Should join me again? Have you got time, I mean? Sounds fun. I'll let you know. Got drinking birds. Hey, Pablo. Hey, Instructor Rine. Can I have your stuff? I wanted to ask you about Valerie. I heard you got into a big fight with her. Aye, we argument got way out of hand. We haven't talked since. How did it start? I asked her to be on vocals. Vocals? Aye, she never sings in front of people, but I've heard her sing to herself a few times, and her voice is just too good. So I asked her to take over on vocals, even just once, you know? She wasn't having it though. I got a wee bit pissed, and next thing you know, we were going at it. Hmm, I see. Now that I think of it, I've heard her singing too. Can you remember that? She had a nice voice. Although she doesn't wanna be in the spotlight, but I just think it's been such a waste of talent if she didn't. I know I went overboard myself, though. Problem is, I can't figure out how to make things right. Yeah, I'm gonna talk to her one more time. You wait just a little bit longer. Instructor Rine, cheers. Appreciate it. I think I've got a better grasp on the situation now. Should probably go talk with Valerie again. How come she got so mad? Ah, can't focus today. She doesn't like to be in the spotlight. You wanted to be in the spotlight. It's quite simple. There's probably some underlying reason on top of that, but still. Says no, you says yes. It's her decision in the end. Instructor Schwartz, are you still here? Yeah, I talked with Pablo and Gustav. I think you should find a way to make up with Pablo. You're such a busybody. Well, if it were just a normal argument, I wouldn't step in like this. But it seems like there's something you've been bottling up. Bottling up? Yeah, I'm sure you'd deny it, but you wanna be on vocals more than anyone, don't you? That's not true. Hmm. Well, sorry if I am being a busybody, but you're from a noble family in North Ambria, right? So what if I am? It's just that if that were the case, I can imagine the circumstances you must have endured. Well, you're not wrong there. In fact, when North Ambria was still a dukedom, the nobility system was still in place. After the North Ambrian disaster, the government was remade and the nobility abolished, and they kept their wealth to some extent. In a poor country like ours, children born into wealth and comfort were, of course, victims of envy and spite. Valerie. And on top of that, I have another secret. The truth is, my family is related to the former Grand Prince of North Ambria, Belmond. The former Grand Prince? I'm sure you know the story, but you're a history teacher after all. Grand Prince Belmond, the traitorous ruler who fled North Ambria during the disaster 28 years ago. Apparently, any family with connections to him is a family of devils, mine included. How could they say such a thing? I came here intending to keep that a secret, but I don't care anymore. Anyway, it's probably best you not get involved with a devil. So please, instructor, just leave me be. I can't do that. Oh, someone's overheard. Valerie! How come you didn't tell me sooner? This is not fair for someone who's done nothing wrong to be treated like that. Hey! How long were you two here? We were here pretty much the whole time. Sorry. Pablo and I were just worried, though. Ah, this school's just full of busybodies. But fine, I'll let you two know as well. Nothing good will come from associating with me, so... Don't be daft! Huh? Yeah, hearing that stuff even made me angry. I mean, the devils. None of that matters in the rock world. Ah, now that I think of it, it might even come in handy. Rock's all about the soul. Your huppling and done that haven't to do anything to do with it? Yeah, Valerie, it's about time you quit bottling it all up. Take these emotions and light a fire some. Let them blow right up. Um... You mean they wanna play some rock music with you now? Alright then, I'll go get the keys to the art room. Yeah, you get me, instructor. Hey, what are you? This better not be the music they're playing. How did it all end up like this? Ah, no use whining about it. Hey, you just gotta do it. I know, I know, screw it! I know, I know, screw it! That was brilliant! Your music was almost entrancing. I'd say it was pretty darn close to professional sounding.
Flattery won't get you anywhere.
Why need be so shy? It was a square thousand times better than any lyrics that fall out my ear. So from now on, you'll be focused on vocals! Is that right with you, Valerie?
Nah, fine, whatever.
I guess it's too late for me to back out anymore anyway. Secret sound now. Does that mean you'll agree to it? Yeah, I give up. Yes, get in there! I get the feeling things are only gonna get more fun from here on. And so, the branch campus quest Rockin' a Hard Place is completed. And we learn more of the fact that Erebonia's definition of rock is just not ours. I have to admit, this is a big relief! Yeah, I can finally focus on studying for the test. Hey, um, can I- I can help you guys study if you want? That'd be a massive help, actually. It sure would. Thanks, Valerie. Modern music club's finally made up. So what should we go over first? I think that both of us are good when it comes to sciences. Yeah, it'd probably be best to focus on economics and history. Okay, that's the end of their talking, they're not gonna give us any clues. Well, let's head out again. Such eh, 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 with like the strumming of like metallic- Yeah. It was, uh... We couldn't even judge the lyrics, because we couldn't hear any of them. Damn. Let's not be music critics, shall we? Let's talk to Tadiana. A Musei? What are they studying today? Did you study physics? I'd say they're making good progress. Well, actually, we're having a hard time concentrating, and I'm sure that if you help us, we can make even more progress. Ah, I almost thought you were being very serious there for a second. Hmm, music never changes! They both get good grades, so I shouldn't have to worry about them. That's still no reason for me not to help out. Okay. Physics... Something politics. Let's find more. Yeah, I don't think sitting down for a study session with Musei is actually, uh... That much of a good idea. I'm not sure much studying gets done... By designer Musei. Alright, Daisy, what's up? Remember our little promise? The one we made for after the midterms were over? Oh, can't believe I almost forgot about our good session on the juice. My hand in the particulates while I work out the schedule. Certainly. Ah, drinking night. How's my sister doing? From what I hear, she's really trying her best. Ah, it seems like she's trying to come up with a new menu. You're sure she's got manage? And she'll be knackered since she helps her home as well. She doesn't even realise how hard she's been working. Ah, she's so silly. How's my sister doing? Okay, says same text again. Let's talk to Becky next. I'm thinking about giving all the Forrester graduates through here for a cheeky bevvy once tests are done with. I did hear you'd be able to make it as well, but you're also busy. Sorry. Probably have tons of grading to do. Can I get a rain check? Hey, bother, I'll just gather up anyone that can make it. You make priority to the test, so I'll let you focus on that. We'll grade the test while we're drunk, it's gonna be fine.
He's a show, and I'll get you what you need.
Oh, give me what I need right now? He says terrible accents. Don't think there's anything else here I need to get. Think we're all good for that stuff?
Catch you later! He's a show, and I'll get you what you need.
About the normal shopping, a blonde tear for Aurelia. I don't think I need that somehow, you can buy in a business shop, but you could buy evergreen straight up now.
Hope to see you again!
Same! So... That's where Ash is, I was like thinking... Like, I'm missing someone on the map here for maybe an event. But he's in here, this is where he is. No one's in the tennis club! Has anyone we ever been able to get into there? Let's go for bottom first. And find no one, but even if we find no one, we make sure we can't- Oh yeah. We've gotta go slow for the rooms. Okay, go in there, can go in here. This time we actually have to look out for things. If my memory from a game we played six months or more ago... Is there anything to go by? Like, how long- well, it was more than six months. Alright, no one's down here, that's the cafeteria. I didn't see anything. No books. Yep. Having to go through. Be very careful about everything. Alright, so Ash is playing chess with Stark. I'm thinking, normally it would be of course- I hope there's no- no tea questions, please. I understand when I'm out of my depth and I'm fluking something. But this is where we're trying to prepare ourselves to just be better. I can't see anything. I'm not fluking, we're gonna get it. Ash, Stark, don't you study? What do you think, we're just doing this for fun? We're actually using chess pieces to review military science. Oh, next level. Oh, I see. Review military science, both of them scored high in their class. I mean, you said, maybe I'll join them since I have the chance. So military science, that's something I should be able to get, right? I'd think, that's the one of the categories I kinda went, okay, we've got for that. So at this point, well, it depends what Altina's studying down there. I think I'd probably go with Kurt and Altina. If Altina's got something that I'm hazy on. Looks like that guy from the sewers! That's not Frankie. Room check, check! Now to report to Mr. Celestine.
Oh, Instructor Rin, good day, chief.
Yeah, hello Frankie, you seem like you've been working hard lately.
Well, I guess when you're Celestine's assistant, every day's like that, isn't it? Yeah, hey, yeah. Uh, it should every day ends with me reflecting my work. Lately, I feel like I've gotten a little used to it. I even have more energy than I used to.
See. Is everybody keep up with Celestine? He's definitely got some talent.
Well, I'm glad to hear things are going well. Just keep at it and don't give up. Understood, thank ya! Some materials are missing. Oh, but wait, they might be in the other storehouse. Ah, I still need to go shoving too, gotta hurry! I want everyone to be able to use it once the exam's over. Gotta check just in case. He may still be in training, but I think he's got a bright future ahead of him. Found ya!
No one, no one hiding mine there. You personally say Kurt and Musei, well, the subject of physics sounds like something a bit more broad that I could get. I'm going by what subjects sound possibly hardest for me. It's what we did last time. Exams, seems like everyone is under quite a lot of stress. You was well, Rin, appears you've been pulled in a number of different directions. Yeah, well, that's been instructor for ya. Not much to speak about there, is there? Exams, oh. Really not much else there. Not gonna get much going on. Alright, Mr. Schmidt. What do you have going on?
Are these the remains of the White Isle? I was able to get a decent sample. The sample is better than the ones from Sudden and Crossbell, but it will take quite some time for me to analyse it.
Is that so? I mean, his abilities were intense, especially on annihilation, moving the railway cannons.
It's safe to say it's the culmination of the Society's gorgeous class. Last I heard, it's in development, stored out two years ago, but we may need to revise our understanding.
Now, an eventual tachy has been repaired. Literally as I looked to the right, see, did no one say anything about how I was poking tachy? There you go, there's your- there's your answer, right there in the net. Take to make sure it's as sharp as you remember. Okay, thank you, professor. Timing.
To be honest, I thought it was gonna be the end for me. I was somehow able to endure it with that mana blade thing. There's probably some mana feedback that went for the Divine Knight, but it's not reliable, and expect it to happen again.
Yeah, you're right. Anyway, thank you very much. Good job with the repairs, sir!
A black workshop. Seems they're finally starting to show their hand. Yeah, there's still so many things we don't know, though. Seems they possess at least two Divine Nightline machines, and Society is at least one as well. Jordan's already spoken to me about this matter, however, as of this moment, I have nothing to tell you. It's simply something you'll have to figure out for yourself. Ash in a week and a half.
Understood, I'll keep that in mind. I guess you're pragmatic enough to keep this secret, because you might have actually been straight up told. Hey, Mint! Samla, boy, am I glad I'm not a student anymore! If you want, I could try to help you study, just be warned. Orbital science is the only thing I'm any good at, so bear beware! And the jury's kinda out on that one too, I tried borrowing one of Tita's books and got dizzy trying to read it. Mint, weren't you a second year of main camps until like six months ago? Hmm, maybe? I swear. She's a practice, she's a doer, not a like a book smarts person. She can't quote all of it, but she can show you how to do it, as I imagine that's Mint's talent. I'm not very smart when it comes to, well, anything that is an orbital science. I'm pretty sure I've forgotten everything I learned as a first year. Are you? I guess I better like... Trade this over now. I'm not gonna get a better rate. Now I'm very rich. I have many monies! Speaking of awards, actually. Before I forget... There we go, that's much better. Better not forget that, right? Off we go then! Can I go this way? I can? That's where you- Deep inside Einholdkeip is a hidden exam club. Where they will tell us all the answers. As long as we can fight a boss, we can get to the actual test papers! Well, you start a rumor like this and some student gets himself terribly injured trying to abstain of these papers. It's not like I can go anywhere really, or need to go anywhere currently. No sparklies, that's what we're looking for. Off I go then! Alright, let's find out what Altina's up to.